Hello, 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 hello.
He's here.
Yep. We hear you, we don't see you, Rich.
Okay, folks, we're live.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council working meeting. So this is just us having conversations about city issues, is no, no public input, we're not voting on anything or deciding anything, we're just discussing some city business. So with that, why don't we start, I guess, with the elephant in the room, the Haberman case? So Donna, I assume Bob's gonna fill us in, or do you have anything you're gonna start, Rich, or some, who's?
Bob is gonna fill us in.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll recall that we tried this case back in November, and we spent the month of December submitting briefs. We received a decision last, earlier this week, or last week. Unfortunately, the court, Justice Libert, did not agree with our position. You'll recall that this case started in 1989 with the settlement of a lawsuit with Mr. Haberman. The city entered into a stipulation at that time. Then, in that stipulation, involved the building, getting a variance to build four buildings. The, in 2003, the zoning board revoked a permit to drive piles and install footings for one of those buildings. And the city's been in litigation ever since. The city, as you know, defaulted in answering. So all we had was a trial on damages in November. Justice Libert accepted the plaintiff's position that they had a contract that entitled them to build four buildings. We had argued that that was an illegal contract, and that despite the default, the plaintiff, Mr. Haberman, could not obtain judgment on the basis of that contract. Then Justice Libert accepted their theory of damages, which was that because of the, because of the breach of the contract, they were prevented from using the property for 15 years, and as a result, were entitled to an amount equal to what they would have earned on the value of the property for those 15 years, had it been invented in a, invested in a real estate investment trust. We argued that that was completely wrong as a matter of law, as a matter of damages. We argued that when you breach a contract, you pay for what the other side would have earned, had the contract been performed. And we presented evidence that that, that number was no more than $5 million. Justice Libert rejected that argument. He did accept our argument that there was no compensable civil rights violation by the zoning board, and therefore, no ward of attorney's fees to Mr. Haberman. But that's where we are, and that's how he came up with his, his decision. We did argue that the city was entitled to a credit for the $23 million that Xander had paid in settling the case. He, Justice Libert, has scheduled a hearing on that issue to determine whether that, that payment was made for the loss of use of the property, for the same damages that the plaintiffs claimed from the city. You know, our position on that is that, that's what it says in the stipulation, so therefore, we're entitled to the full $23 million credit. Justice Libert has scheduled a hearing on that. He hasn't scheduled yet, he said there has to be a hearing on that. So that's where we are. We go from here to the entry of, to that hearing, into the entry of a judgment, and then to if the city wants to pursue an appeal, to an appeal.
So if, well, just take a step back, and so you talked about the city defaulting. That was the 2017 one that was in the judgment?
You know, it's going back so far, John, I don't remember what year it was. I think it was more like 2014 that the city defaulted.
Okay, can you explain, explain how the city defaulted?
What happened was, there was, there was a settlement of the case as a result of a mediation. The council, no, I'm sorry, I'm giving my chronology wrong. The, the city, the matter got up to the Court of Appeals. The, on the issue of whether the city manager, the city corporation counsel at the time, had lawfully extended the term of the contract, or the term of the variance, without the consent of the zoning board. The courts up until then had said that he had no authority to do that. The Court of Appeals overruled him, sent it back. When it came back, the plaintiffs amended their complaint, and the city was required to answer. There followed extensive settlement discussions. At a certain point in that process, the plaintiff said, "No more, we're not talking anymore, you must answer." They demanded that the city answer. The city did not answer by the date they set. The city answered four days later. They then moved to hold the city in default. And Justice McCormick held the city in default, and the appellate division affirmed that decision.
So how did, how did the city defaulting impact the result of, this, this result that we wound up with?
Well, if the city had not defaulted, we would have been able to contest the merits of the lawsuit. We would have been able to test whether the city, in fact, breached the contract. But because of the default, we could not contest the breach of the contract that was established as a matter of law. All we could contest was that the contract was illegal, and therefore, even though the city breached, the plaintiff couldn't recover on that contract.
So because the city's corporation counsel at that time did not respond, we couldn't contest the suit?
We couldn't, we could only contest the damages, the amount of the damage.
The damages, I'm sorry, that's what I meant to say.
That's correct.
So there's a possibility...
Bob, Bob.
Go ahead, Karen.
Bob, do the city council members even know that the corporation counsel was responsible to respond within that certain timeframe?
I don't know. I was not involved.
Does anybody know?
I don't know. I was not involved at the time. I only came and became involved a year or two later. When, when there was a settlement, and the city council decided not to pursue that, the city council decided it wanted to get out of that settlement.
So we're potentially in this situation because the corporation counsel, back in 2014, didn't do his job?
Well, I don't wanna, I can only say what the facts are.
Did not turn in the paperwork that time.
Right. So that, that's why we're potentially in this situation, because one person didn't do their damn job.
Well, no, it's not, it's the corporation counsel's job who reports to the city manager.
Who is this, 2014?
At that time.
The chairman?
The corporation counsel, it was the corporation's ability to submit that paperwork. The corporation counsel is responsible for all legal matters of the city, but they also report to the city manager. So the city manager should be aware of dates like that. The city council doesn't know these dates, but you know, so I would say, I would guess they didn't know. I don't, I don't know when the trial, you know, dates are due for anything.
I know Scott's not...
That's why you hired the corporation counsel.
I know Scott's not on, but I believe, I'm almost positive, Scott said the council knew nothing about it. So at the time...
That's what I thought, I thought too.
I would probably go with that as well.
So, so basically, we got screwed royally by one of the corp counsel and the city manager at the time. Chalk another one up for them.
But it's, it's also every corporation counsel and city manager before that and after that.
Well, this suit's been going on for, since 1989, but, but that was a, that was a big dropping of the ball there in 2014, when they defaulted.
It changed, that changed the course of everything.
Right, and of course, there was no accountability for those people either.
I'm sorry, I just need to take a breath because I'm so caked off.
You know, it's, I know we're not supposed to talk about politics, but the stupid-ass politics in this city is just, it's pathetic, and, and we're paying the price for it now.
Is there any, if I ask a question?
Sure, Ron.
Just have a question to, for the, for, I guess, you, Bob. Are there any, is there any possibility of seeking damages for negligence or failure to properly represent on the corporation counsel at the time, one? Two, is there any possibility for the city to get that particular individual to actually submit some documentation that they were negligent in their failure to respond to the request by the, I guess, the plaintiff for a response, which resulted, I guess, in what, a directed verdict?
It was, it was a default, the default judgment. I'm not, you know, I don't, I'm not in a position to render opinion on that. I can tell you, just because of another case that I happen to be involved with, that the law is generally that you cannot sue your own employee for negligence.
So, Bob, just a quick question because, or a statement, I, I don't, we're, we should be kicking this down the road again. So the next city council, the next city corp, the next city manager, all the new residents that are coming in have to pay for prior mistakes. It's time, so what, maybe this is a Donna question, where do we go?
So what we've been doing is, since we got the, the information on Monday, we've talked to Bob, Ina and I and Rich have gotten together, and what we're, and then we got together with our financial advisors. We've been meeting with them a couple times already this week. And what we're going to do is, we understand that something happened, but my job is to make sure that we don't kick this can down the road, and that we deal with what we have now. And so we've come up with several different alternatives, and we're running numbers, and we hope to talk to Haberman, again, especially based on the statement that was put into the newspaper. And right now, what's happening with us and this lawsuit does not have an immediate impact on our services or our residents. And so what we're doing is, we're coming together, we're going to put a plan together, the best possible plan we can to take care of this. Hopefully, we can do some more negotiation, and then we will get the issue resolved. Once we, we have a couple more meetings between this week and next week, and then we will update the council on where we are, after we talk to some attorneys and talk about the alternatives. By no means are we kicking this can down the road. You brought me here, you hired me to help the city get back on track. Now, unfortunately, since I've been here, it seems like a lot of things are going on. However, my goal is not to leave the city worse than what it is. So for example, what we're going to do is, we're going to show all of the liabilities that the city owes. We're talking payouts, comp time, bond payments, this lawsuit, then we're gonna look at it, and we're gonna come to the council and say, "This is everything you owe." Now, this is how we can resolve these issues. This is what it's going to take, after we finish talking to our, to our advisors, our bond counsel, and into the attorneys. So I hope I answered your question. We're not kicking the can down the road.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Now, one of the issues we also need to keep in mind during an appeal process, we're still on the clock from an interest perspective. An interest on a lawsuit is 9%, which is compounded. So theoretically, we could be looking at just the first year, 10 or 11 million dollars in interest, and depending how long an appeal takes, I don't know, Bob, what's an appeal typically take time-wise?
Well, I mean, the first part of it is how long it takes us to get our brief in, and get the other side to get their brief in. We could probably get that done in, you know, four to six months. The larger problem is that the backlog in the appellate division second department is substantial for getting to oral argument, could be as much as two years. We would ask for a preference, but no guarantee we'd get it.
So we could be looking at another 20 or 30 million dollars, just in interest, before we even get an appeal decision?
That's correct.
But what I want to say is, remember what I said. We are not trying to kick this can down the road.
Right.
And so we are trying to get anything and everything resolved by working with Haberman. So as I stated, we, we, we really want to try to get whatever we can get resolved, because we can't afford to get to add on interest. That's why we're working so hard to see what we can do.
And Donna, this is what, this is what fixing problems looks like. It's a little messy, and it's a lot of work, and I have full confidence in you and the team to work with, to work with the Haberman team to come to a resolution as painful, with the least amount of pain as possible. So thank you.
I appreciate that, Karen, thank you.
Rich, 2014, Corey Klein was corp counsel?
I believe so, yep.
Okay, thank you. And we know who the city manager was. All right, I guess, I guess now we have to, we'll...
You guys have any other procedural questions for Bob, or anything as far as next steps?
I do, Rich. Bob?
Yes.
This is Mike Delory.
Yes, Mike.
Do you have any idea what the settlement discussion was originally?
I, I, I have the stipulation. I don't have it in front of me, I can't.
No, I...
But I can tell you exactly where it was, and give you a copy of it.
Okay, I was just curious if, how much, you know, background did you, because the case is 30 years old, I guess, when it was started, so I don't know. That's a lot of information. The other question I have, did Judge Libert hear the Xander case as well?
Xander case was going to be tried, the damages part of the Xander case was going to be tried along with the case against the city, until the day before the trial was to begin, when Xander settled with Haberman.
Also heard by justice, was it in Judge Libert's court?
It was, we were gonna be trying the case together, all of us in the same room, taking the same testimony.
Okay. And if you know the answer to this, is the dollar amount broken down by, like, loss of income? Legal, I think you said there's no legal fees. 15 years of not able to use the property goes back to 2004 or '05?
Right, that's 2003.
2003.
2003 to 2018, which is when they got their permit back.
Did, and did the loss of income, was it adjusted each year for rates of return?
Yes, the rate of return each year was based on an index of the rate of return on real estate investment trusts. They had expert testimony as to that number. We put in expert testimony as to what we thought the appropriate measure was, which was the increase in the cost of living over those years.
Okay.
Or the T-bill rate, whichever was higher, I think.
Okay.
And the judge accepted their measure of damages. In my view, incorrectly, but that's what he did.
All right. I hope he applies that now, too, for future cases.
Bob, this is Liz. A real estate investment trust, that's, is that a REE?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And you had mentioned Judge McCormick.
Yes.
What was his involvement in this whole?
He was handling the case at the time that the motion for default judgment was made. He decided that the city had defaulted.
All right, I think that's, personally, personally, Bob, I, I was, I was aware of the case itself, not knowing any detail. I've heard about it. I'm just surprised at what I thought the number was to what it was, and not between the discussion on a council, just like, I'll call it heard on the street, maybe, or something like that. But, well, thank you, that's, thank you for answering the questions. That's all I have at this time.
All right, anyone else, or... All right, thanks, Bob, we appreciate it, the info, and I guess we'll, I'm sure you and Donna and Rich, and be talking about looking at our options.
We will.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome, good night.
Thank you, Bob, good night. I guess we'll just mention quick, since he's on, and I guess, I guess most of you know, we found out, I guess, yesterday late, Ron's 211 waiver had not been approved by the state. Ron, you have a temporary waiver now, right, that goes through the end of February, correct?
Right, so I listened to the actual hearing. Believe it or not, I actually found out that the waiver was not granted as a permanent waiver from Rich DePalma, who heard it from members of the department, who actually listened to the hearing to see if I was approved. So I went online, I listened to it. It was a 45-minute hearing. At minute 23, they said, and I'll do the best I can to let you know what they said, is they said, "The next application is from the city of Long Beach with regard to hiring a commissioner of police. Ronald Walsh is seeking a 211, the city is seeking a 211 waiver for Ronald Walsh. The city had 12 applicants. One of the applicants was eliminated immediately for failing to meet the minimum qualifications. 11 other applicants were involved. Seven of the applicants did not require a waiver. Four of the applicants did require a waiver. The city, after further questioning, reaffirmed that the, all of the, all of the 11 applicants met the minimum qualifications. We are therefore recommending that Ronald Walsh be granted a temporary waiver until February 28th, at which time he would no longer be entitled to earn his salary and his pension. This in no way reflects on Mr. Walsh's, Mr. Walsh's qualifications for the position. He just not would be able to collect his pension and his salary at the same time." So what that means is that in order, 211 waiver 101 is this. I can, I must be the only qualified candidate to get the position. So if anybody else is qualified, then, and they don't need a waiver, they get the job. So what typically happens, I can tell you the experience of one of my prior commissioner for the Nassau County Police Department. He went out to Lloyd Harbor. Lloyd Harbor requires you to take a police chief exam. He takes the exam. He's not immediately reachable, because he just doesn't come out in the top three. So there's a guy in the top three who says he'll take the job, and he doesn't need the waiver, he'll just take the job straight. That causes a problem for the individual who has the job, because he now has a qualified candidate, passed the test, and who met the minimum qualifications. The state recommended through their, with, in consultation with their attorneys, that you change the job specifications to meet exactly what the city, in that case, the village, wanted for their commissioner of police. They wrote the job specifications for the specific individual that they wanted. They changed the specification so that the other candidate no longer qualified, and he got, got his permanent waiver. That's the way it works.
Okay, all right, so that, that's, that sounds a little odd, that if you, if you're qualified, doesn't matter if it's being qualified and being the right person are often two different things in a job interview process.
Well, the way it actually works, John, is that the, the candidate, you don't get to choose the best candidate with regard to people who have the waiver. If the person who is the best candidate needs a waiver, they must be the only qualified candidate. If they don't need a waiver, you can choose the best candidate. If you have only people who require waivers, you can take the best candidate in that. Does that make sense?
No, actually, but I understand what you're telling me, but does it make sense? But does it make sense? No.
Well, what it did, what I, what I will tell you, based on what we just found out in him getting the temporary waiver, is that we need to look at our job descriptions.
Right.
Because the job description that was put out was the basic job description, very minimal. And so now what we're doing is that for every job that we post, everything we need and everything they will do will be in that posting, so that the people that do not qualify for the job on the entire posting, we can eliminate. We didn't eliminate people because they had the bare minimum to hold that position. So I want people to understand that the waiver itself is in question, not the person.
Correct.
Not the person that was there before was on a temporary waiver. And so, we're going to, we're going, they told me what to do. I talked to the state today to correct it, and then we move forward, because he's on a temporary waiver. So whether we had the last person that was in the seat, or the current person in the seat, and we needed a waiver, there was some work that the city would still have.
Right.
So we'll just move forward.
Just so you know, whoever you would have picked that required a waiver, this would have been the situation because of the waiver.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I get that. All right, so we'll do what we, we'll...
I'm here.
Do what we gotta do to fix it and move forward. Okay, I guess, why don't we talk about the, I guess, because we got contacted by a few people about the, the three parking lots that, that we gave up. So I think, just for recapping for everyone, the city had, I don't know, Rich, how many total lots did we have? Do you remember, no offhand?
Well, we leased, you might?
No, no, I know it was three we leased, but total lots?
283, I think.
No, 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 lots, not, not spot, lots.
Three.
We leased three, I don't, I think John has a total on hand, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's, it's like a dozen or something, well, not that many, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we were, I'll double check right now, but I think we were 11 lots total, most of which were city-owned, and it was three that were, that we were leasing from private entities.
All right, Ina has a presentation.
Oh, she does? Oh, all right.
So David?
Dave, thank you very much. So I will, I put together a little analysis in Excel, hopefully everyone can see it on their screens.
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, so this is just to, to talk about the financial impact and the cost and the revenues that were associated with all the lots. Okay, so on expenses side, I did analysis for three years for '18, '19, and '20, and it shows the number of spaces for Monroe and Shore, 92, and we paid them $113,590 a year. And Temple Zion had 22 spots, and we paid them $36,000 a year. So the total for those privately owned lots that city was renting was $149,590. City also owns some, like, mansion.
Before you move on, I just, so I just punched this into my calculator. So we were paying $1,312 per parking spot, and that doesn't include the fact that we had to maintain the lots and plow to snow.
That's accurate.
So we were probably paying 6... So we were probably paying sixteen to eighteen hundred dollars per year, per spot. And we were charging 50 bucks for that same spot?
Well, it's not, you're correct about the thirteen hundred dollars just for the spot and rental fees. Plus obviously city maintains those spots. Um, we were not selling those spots. Just one permit per spot. So, um, we've sold almost a thousand dollars, a thousand, um, number, a thousand permits in 2020. So, um, yeah, we were charging fifty dollars per permit and paying thirteen hundred per spot.
So, so there was spots for a hundred and fourteen people in those three lots. But, but thirty-three and a half thousand Long Beach residents were subsidizing parking for a hundred and fourteen people.
That is accurate. A hundred and fourteen spots, yes. And I don't know if it was a hundred and fourteen people who used it or 200 people who used it. But, um, obviously, um, it, we were paying much more than what we were collecting in revenues.
Okay. Sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, sure. I mean, these are, these are very clear observations from this schedule. So again, it was, and, um, just by the way, the twenty-five thousand dollars that you see, the total, um, cost of the city owned lots, this is my estimate. We can obviously come up with the better one, but that's a very rough estimate. That's probably, um, if anything, it, it, it's on the lower end of the range there because the city is responsible for snow removal and for, um, cleaning and, um, all the other maintenance involved. So for all, almost 300 spots that, that, that were in play at that point.
So though if, and you may not have this information, but, and, and I'm going from memory here, but from what I understand, when the city, if we were to jack up the parking permit fees, when the city went from a $10 parking permit fee annually to a, and, and if Dave's on, he may notice, when we went to 50 bucks per year, the number of permits sold went from what I, I was told, somebody, I'm going from memory here. Somebody told me we went from selling about 5,000 permits at 10 bucks to selling a thousand permits at 50 bucks. So the more we.
It wasn't that dramatic. It went from about 2,200 permits down to about, I think right now we're down to about 12 to 1,300.
Okay. So we, we have to assume if, if we tried to, let's just say hypothetically, keep these lots, the amount we would have to jack up the permits by would drive down the people who buy permits significantly, most likely. So we would might wind up in the exact same situation we are now where we got less people buying permits. So we're bringing in less money and we're back to where we started.
I certainly think that this is an elastic revenue where, um, if you raise the price of the permit, you will get less number of permits sold.
But, you know, but, uh, that depends on how much a person really values a parking spot.
Well, and that brings, that brings up an interesting point, Karen, because if there's, uh, let's say the two lots in the East End have 92 spots. If it costs us whatever, sixteen hundred dollars a year for those spots, then if we were to keep those lots, it may make more sense for us to sell 92 parking passes for those lots at sixteen hundred dollars each. That way we.
Yeah. I, I just don't see why the, the owner of that lot doesn't ask, doesn't make, work with, with the residents near them and, and open the lots and charge them directly.
Well, I, I know parking in some of the buildings down there, Donna's a perfect example. Donna pays 350 a month to park in her building.
And in Manhattan, they like five or you pay 600, 800 dollars to park your car.
Sixteen hundred dollars a year, um, for parking, you know, 150 bucks a month for parking compared to what some of the buildings are charging is, is a bargain.
Listen, nobody, nobody likes to not have a spot. I remember having a Mini Cooper in the West End and I couldn't get a spot. But the reality is, is that some people are willing to pay three to 500 dollars a month for a spot. From what I've, from what I've seen, hopefully the people that own those lots will listen to the residents that have been paying them year in, year out through the city taxes to lease the spots and hopefully they'll, uh, open those lots up for parking.
Well, the, the lots, the charter has, um, and Rich, you can correct me, the charter, um, dictates to how much they can actually charge for a space. The reason we opened this back up is because we've been getting people calling and saying, we, we can't find parking spaces now. What are we going to do in the summer? Which is a legitimate question. So we said that if the spaces that we have, we, we had the exact number of people come to us and say, we will pay sixteen hundred dollars a year for a parking space. Then we can consider talking to the owners, but we can't talk, we can't lose money. Because what the main thing is that people have to understand, we no longer have the huge lot that people parked, uh, during the summer. That lot is gated up. So that means it was much harder on parking. But again, Rich, why don't you, what is the amount that the owners actually can charge for parking? And that could be why they're Karen, that could be why they're not charging because they see what it costs to maintain the lot and how much they can get for the parking space. They may not have, it may not meet their break even point.
Right now, um, provisions in the code basically provide that owners of just a plain old lot, meaning not associated with any building, where it reads, it reads that they're capped at about a hundred bucks a month per spot. That's something that you as the council can consider on amending or changing in the future. Should you like to let, you know, let the market decide what the price is going to be. And that's something we can always put on for your consideration in the future. So, but to Donna's point, you know, unless, unless there's a, unless there's an actual, I guess, will from the public to, to, to pay these fees for that private lot, you know, we can't really reopen any meaningful discussions, I guess, with the private parking lot owners. Is that your point, Donna?
So, so, so base.
John, before you start.
Go ahead.
Rich, do you have a historical perspective on the lots? Why, why these were getting so much money is?
I think it goes kind of a little bit to what John alluded to in the beginning. I mean, this was essentially a political will at the time, from what I understand, decided to provide this parking because there's such a dearth of parking over on that Shore Road corridor as well as in the West End. Cause we, we have leased some lots over there in the West, at least one lot over there in the West End as well.
How many years?
And so that was, what's that?
You know how many years? The lots have been.
This has been. I can look it up for you right now.
I believe it's since 2010.
Thank you.
So, so because this was such a god awful business model, the owner of the lots didn't sell the spots because there was no way they could, I'm assuming they felt there was no way they could even cover their costs by the owner selling lots. So instead the city took on that bad business model.
And subsidize it.
And subsidized. So now the landlord is making a ton of money off of the city.
Right.
For a lot and doing nothing for it because the city has to maintain the lot, which makes no sense to me. Why we're maintaining a lot that we don't own.
So considering that the city's costs to, to maintain a lot go up every year, I would love to see the, an actual, um, estimate of what it costs to maintain each of those three lots each year, like a solid number. Whether it's 1,200, 1,600 or 1,800, because it shouldn't be break even because the city's costs go up every year. So I would want.
It sounds like, it sounds like this, this, I, I, I'm just shooting from the hip here, but it sounds like there's, there's three options. One is we just, we're done. We've rented these, we're not paying for these lots anymore. We are not. We're not going to, the city's not going to pay 1,600 dollars for a parking space and then sell a parking pass for it for 50 bucks. That's one. Two is we find 92 people that are willing to pay 16 or whatever we figure out it costs us each year, 16, 1,800 dollars, whatever it is. Get a number of people willing to buy those spots each year. And then we, I guess we could open a dialogue back with the owner again, or that's two, or three. We could amend the charter or the code, whichever one it's in, and allow the landlord to charge a, a market rate, uh, and let them run their lot.
Yeah, but John, I think you're, you're assuming that this deal per space was marketed at the time and not inflated.
Well, again, if, if, if there's a cap on what they can charge in the code, that's the cap. If the cap is a hundred bucks now, clearly the landlord, whoever owns these lots, made a decision that at, at, at a hundred bucks or whatever they could charge, there was no way that it made any sense. But I mean, if it's, and when you said a hundred, Rich, that's, that's a year, right? Not a month, right?
Yeah. It's a, it's a hundred a month. I believe the cap that they have is.
A hundred a month. Okay.
And just, just for some additional context, you know, these lots were not paved lots that were necessarily being contemplated. You know, one of these lots had a foundation structure on it. Um, and when the city took it over, my understanding, it was that, um, in 2010, the city manager at the time, in an effort to alleviate parking, um, pursued this route. And you can, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but pursued this route with the intention of basically creating assigned spots for individuals and then went after it and pursued a plan and then found out legally it was not possible to have, you know, assigned spots and then was stuck with the lots. And ended up here and there's not been a will to correct it because the demand for parking is so great ever since then. Um, and because there's been such an outcry every single time that, uh, the, the cost of the parking pass has increased even incrementally from four to $10 and then 10 to $50.
I just don't, I just don't want to see this be, being something that could be sold on eBay for, you know, or like Ticketmaster where it ends up being 5,000 dollars if somebody really wants a spot, even if we sanction it to be something else.
Well, Doc, Karen, to your point, um, Monroe and Shore, uh, basically beachfront, almost parking for 50 dollars or whatever it was a year, to me, could I, I'm going to give you a hypothetical here. Let's say I lived on, um, the other side of Long Beach and I wanted to get a, a, a Shore Road parking spot and I apply because I don't want to walk all the way from Fulton, East Fulton Street, all the way down to Monroe. I could just drive my car and park there just for the summer. What, how crazy is that?
Well, look, I mean.
Am I, am I wrong? John, am I wrong with that type of scenario that could happen?
Look, the, the, the issue is there's no doubt. We all know parking sucks in East End. I mean, I used to park in the, the West End lot we just gave away. I used to park in that one. And so I lost that. Um, it's, uh, parking sucks in this, in this city. It's, it's a simple fact of life, but I, I just, this is my personal, I don't, I don't know how we justify selling a parking space for 50 bucks when we have to pay 1,600 for it. That's just, that's insanity.
Totally agree.
That, that is exactly why we're in the financial situation we're in is because these ridiculous decisions were made in the past.
Oh, and by the way, I don't have a parking spot. Nor do I have a driveway, nor do I have anything else. So I just want to say that.
So, so, uh, Mike, everything I read online isn't, isn't necessarily true? Is that what you're telling me, Mike?
I, I just want to say that I don't have, um, you know, a, a parking space at Monroe or Atlanta. I don't even know where these are. I'm just looking at the numbers.
Okay.
Well, all right. So, so like I said, it seems like it, it, there's three ways to go is we just, we give up the lots. It's, it, and yeah, people in the East End, they're losing 92 spots, people in the West End, 22, and that is not a, a good thing, but this, this was financial idiocy, doing it this, the way it is. So the other option is we could look at either, figure out what we would need to charge for a spot. And if, if we could, if 92 people come to us and saying, I'm willing to spend, uh, 150 bucks a month for a parking spot and assigned spot. And then we would have to make whatever changes to the code to allow that. Or the other option is change the code and let the landlord, uh, charge a higher amount. If they want to run it as a.
Where, where should people, um, John or Donna, John McNally or Donna, what should, what email should people use if they're interested in a, you know, a market rate parking spot opportu- potential?
At longbeachny.gov.
One more time?
City manager@longbeachny.gov.
Right. But if we did, if we go down that path, we gotta make sure, I mean, we gotta get, we can't get 40 people, you know, and, and again, go back to subsidizing these, these things. Uh, we'd have to even, first of all, you'd have to work out a plan because now you're going to assign spots and, and we'd have to figure out if that's a different parking pass, I assume.
Well, and it can't be, it can't be assigned spots. That's how the city got into this mess in the bin in the beginning. It would, it would just need to be a limited number of passes. So if you got 98 spots, you sell 98 passes.
Well, why can't the city sell assigned spots?
That's what was attempted when the, this scheme was originally hatched and it was found to be that you can't have assigned spots. Um, and that's how we ended up.
Why can't we?
Well, if, if you have.
I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. I'm just saying this is my understanding of how.
If you have 98 spots and you sell 98, 98 passes, in essence, they're assigned. You just.
Oh, no, no, I understand that, but I'm just, Rich, why is it we can't, you couldn't sell an assigned spot?
Cause we're a government. We're a public, we're a public organization. We don't do custom parking.
Okay. Well, apparently we were in the parking business. So, uh, all right. Well, um, uh, all right. So it's citymanager@longbeachnewyork.gov. If, if 92 people come forward and want to pay, I, like I said, whatever we have to figure out it would be, I'm guessing it's going to be 16, 1,800 dollars.
Or 2,000, who knows?
Well, whatever, we'd have to figure, you know, would have to figure out what it needs to be.
Right.
Or, or if the landlord wants to do it, we could see about changing the code and, uh, letting the landlord run it as a parking lot and charge a, uh, you know, a, a higher rate than is currently allowed. But apparently it, what's just weird to me is the landlord decided not to run it as a parking lot because the business model was so bad, it seems like, but yet we took, the city took it on.
That's why they're the business person.
It's, yeah. All right. Uh, I, I don't know. Do we, is this something we would want to do a, uh, a post on the city's social media outlets to?
We'll take care of it, John.
Okay.
We'll take care of it. We'll talk tomorrow because we have to make sure we have the, the cost correct.
Right, right.
Well, we will take care of it from here.
Yeah. And it, and like I said, you know, clearly we're not going to figure out which of the three options is, you know, it may just turn out it's easier to let the landlord do it, uh, rather than have us take that on. Uh, but, um, I'm sure you guys will figure that out and keep us appraised.
And I just, this is Liz, just one more thing regarding the parking that I don't remember who floated this idea about, but it was to utilize the parking lots from, uh, the old Pier One, the, uh, next to the apartment building. next to the apartment building that's across the street from Pier One that are not used at nighttime like Lancer for spots is, and I think that might have some legal issues using private property.
Well, they're privately owned.
Right, but they would give permission to the city to utilize the spots.
We have done that in the past.
Oh, look at that.
Yes.
That's something that we can check out. We could.
I also, I also have one request as well. I would like to know the assessed value to the 11 lots that the city owns.
We broke up there, Karen. What did you say? You broke up a little bit.
I'd, I'd like to know the assessed value of the land of the parking lots that the city owns. They, we have 11 parking lots left. How much is, how much, how much does each of those pieces of land worth?
Okay. Rich, the, the parking lots that we were leasing, because the city was leasing them, were they tax exempt or did the owner have to pay taxes?
We still had to pay taxes.
Okay, all right. All right, anyone else got anything on this? All right, so citymanager@longbeachnewyork.gov if, I guess people.
Longbeach, longbeachny.gov.
Longbeach NY, sorry, longbeachny.gov if, if somebody can get a group of 92 together. I guess, why don't we, I guess, because Mr. Chief is here, why don't we talk about the the upcoming beach season, even though it's middle of winter? That's how we roll. We gotta get, we're thinking about it now. You're muted, Paul. No, you're still muted, Paul.
Lower left-hand corner, just.
There you go.
There you go.
You got it. It's a new computer. Well, I like to start with the beaches because if I took, I took Joe Brand and I went for a ride in the beach and so did Richie about, you know, we're gonna lose a couple of beaches, I think, this summer unless we get the Army Corps back here at some period of time. I did meet with the lady that was the head person that actually was running the thing and she was on the boardwalk and I said, there's the beach, there's nothing left of it. And I said, why didn't you do the other six jetties? She said, well, it was in the, in the plans and so she didn't give me quite a good answer and she said, they'll be back in two or three years. I said, we'll be putting the stands on the boardwalk by then. So we have to find a way to get them back here and I'm sure it's a political way as usual to get them here. So I really, I could ask Todd Kaminsky maybe to see if he could get, because I think Schumer is the guy that we want to get in touch with.
Yeah, because that's federal, so it would be Kathleen Rice or Schumer, I would think. Uh, because the Army Corps is federal.
The jetties and, and John and Donna have been on the beach many times, as some so has John McNally and you guys have, are, know what I'm talking about. You saw the jetties, they're falling apart a little bit in the end there, they're splitting. And it's not good because the beaches, I think the, as a whole, they did a very good job with the boardwalk and everything else. Well, they didn't do actually the boardwalk, but the dunes, they did a good job, the walkovers. Majority of the beaches are pretty good because they have jetties there. These beaches that are losing all the sand do not have jetties or they're covered, as you guys know. So that's something we have to work on.
Can you just give a couple of, the names of those beaches?
The two that really stick in my mind are Washington and Monroe. If, if any one of you would like a ride on the beach, don't hesitate to call me. I will take you and show you exactly what I'm talking about. It's actually, it's actually a great time with the chief taking a ride, but yeah, there's also at the end of the jetties that you don't see at high tide, chief. There's also, should be a marker at the end for the people that are, I mean, I agree with you, the jetty should be done, it haven't been done. But I know you and I spoke last year about somehow marking something that would prevent anybody from surfing, swimming at high tide to just go right over it, you know? We did put the, the poles are there with the signs and asking a few surfers, they can see it. But you're right, we need some kind of buoy or something on the end of those six jetties that are not done. Yeah, I'm looking at the situation, part A. Hey, jetty should be done if they can be done, but timing is, who knows? You're not going to get them done this sub by the summer. So to prevent that, what's the second plan? Right, exactly. Yeah, so.
Well, just chief, to your point, I think you noticed, the city refused to take ownership of the jetties because of the issue you're talking about. Because the Army Corps tried to turn the jetties over to the city and the city wouldn't accept them because of that issue. They didn't put any, any like foundation stone.
No, they didn't on the bottom, no.
Yeah, they basically just put the stones down on the sand and, you know, of course, the weight and the ocean, you know, stuff.
The power of the ocean changes the whole jetty.
Yeah, yeah, so they're basically sinking some. So I, I know he's not on, but John Morando had been dialoguing with them about, you know, that's the whole reason we didn't take ownership of them. So, I don't know, because I'm on, to your point, I'm on one of the blocks they didn't redo the jetty. So.
You know, and it's going to be some problems too with the, the people are not going to be able to use those beaches by the time the summer comes because we need access up and down that beach and it's going to have to be a road. Right now, unless some storm comes in and it changes the sand level, but I don't think that's going to happen. Yeah. Plus, people that access the beach come from the boardwalk, the entrance to the beach where you're talking about Monroe in the center of town. Yeah. And almost at 6 o'clock PM, that's lining you right up to the worst spot possible, right at the jetty and people go, and you would know, we had a bad, couple of bad incidents this past summer. Yep.
Well, what you, what you're getting on those beaches where the, where the jetties weren't redone is you're basically getting scouring now.
Yeah.
You know, of the sand because it's, it's a break in, in the, in the jetties that are catching sand. Now all of a sudden that break is missing in those spots, so you get.
Absolutely right, John.
So you're getting scouring of the sand out. I, I, yeah.
Well, I mean, we will deal with it like we deal with everything else down there, you know, but we're gonna just have to wait and see what develops by the, by the time we get to open up. And what I'm gonna.
We'll have to build a bridge between, we'll have to build a bridge between Grand and Lindell on the beach.
The, I think, you know, I was, I've discussed too, the fishing with you. I, I love the guys fishing, I love everybody playing the volleyball. But we have to have more control of it. And I think maybe during the week, we could let them fish at the regular time with us having the authority, if there's a big crowd there to move them off that beach and put them on another beach. I think we should start issuing permits to the fishermen. I think that would be a, it would make a little money for the city, not a great deal, but it would give us a little more control. I think, see the weekends as letting them fish until like 10 o'clock and then from 10 to 6, you can't fish on the, because we're gonna have a lot of people down there and it's, it's a safety factor, what it is.
Well, could you have, like we do with the surfing, could you have, not maybe for the whole day, like you said, maybe up till 10 in the morning? Could you have designated fishing beaches?
You know what, then you gotta tell, tell the people, you know, you really can't go here, you can't go there. I'm talking about just the weekends with, with the, with the time, because we get the bigger crowds there, as you guys know, and.
Yeah, I mean, most of the fishing, most of the fishing though takes place usually in the morning and the evening, right? That's, that, that tends to be when the fish are more active, from what I understand, so.
It would, it wouldn't hurt, that's something we're gonna have to really discuss, you know, sit down with the city manager and.
Okay.
And the volleyball too, the volleyball's always been a headache down the beach there. Joe's gonna discuss a lot of the volleyball, the league and everything. But as far as we can have designated beaches for the volleyball, I think it would be a lot better. And again, it's a safety factor with the people not getting clunked in the heads with the balls, which we've had many times before. So the bigger beach is what I'm talking about. And I will, we'll have, we did give a, we did, we did a lot of work, Richie and I, on he, she, Donna has a the layout we have of the beach and what we could, the beaches we could use for volleyball, the ones we shouldn't use. So.
Okay, well, it sounds like you guys are thinking about it and I, I guess if Joe's gonna talk about that, because I see he's on.
Do you want to talk about the umbrellas?
Oh, that's another one too, yes. The, you know, we like that, and a lot of beaches they have, especially Jones Beach and the town of Hampstead, they have what they call an umbrella line. And we're gonna put a, probably a, a sign, one sign on each beach, small sign, just to show where they have to put their umbrellas, umbrellas all the way down, because we have better access to seeing east and, east and west on the beach would make it a little safer for us. When we're lifeguarding, for the guards guarding from the top of the mountain.
Yeah, I mean, I assume we, we could even, I would imagine, put a sign at the beach entrance saying, no umbrellas forward of the lifeguard chairs.
Yeah, we could do that. And we will, of course, have the guards watch it.
Sure.
So they could correct it if they're moving a little forward. But that was, in fact, Donna was the one that brought it up to me last year and she's absolutely right.
Well, yeah, we, we don't want the lifeguard's view obstructed by umbrellas, especially if someone needs help. So.
Uh, let me see what else. I think, you know, we could bring some of the activities. I'm hoping that everything goes well because last summer was probably the worst summer of my life on the beach, having to do these things that nobody ever did before. So we did get through it, no one drowned again, thank God, in the, on the off hours. But I think we do have to do a lot, a little more planning as, as far as how we're gonna run the beach. And we're working on that right now.
Okay.
If Joe wants to come in and talk about the volleyball, he's, is he here, Joe?
I'm here.
There he is.
Good evening, everybody. I guess as a starting point, I'll pick off, pick up where I left off with Donna and Ena last week at, at some of our budget meetings where we identified a lot of information or a lot of, I guess you'd call them changes that may or may not take place in the upcoming summer. There are three components I'd like to touch on tonight with where we are in terms of groundwork that's been laid. You know, Paul alluded to volleyball. I'll group that as part of activities in general because it'll stretch a little bit further than just volleyball. And hopefully will include some of the exercise classes that, that you see going on on the beach and some of the personal profit industry, as I like to call it, that people are utilizing our beaches for, you know, in, in private industry to run, to run businesses. Again, as Paul said, a lot of that is in its infancy stages in terms of planning and a lot of it will have to do with what guidance will be allowable for which activities, most importantly, and probably most prominently in, in, in our community is beach volleyball. As Paul mentioned earlier, we went for a ride last week or the week before, just to kind of do a footprint map for where, or where we would envision the league play to take place in, in the center of town. We're comfortable with the beach space and the usable space that exists in that area for the league to, to, to carry on. And then discussion obviously went a little bit further between he and I and, and some of the, the ideas that the lifeguard patrol shares for the non-league play or, or the recreational play that goes on at beaches all over town. You know, the days of just plopping a net in the middle of a residential beach somewhere and taking up that usable space, that those days may have come to an end, particularly on the weekends when the beach is at its heaviest use. So in terms of events, beach volleyball is, is first and foremost. But I did also wanted to make everybody aware that, you know, we're exploring where we can go with some of the other activities that go on the beach that have kind of gone under the radar and, and maybe something that we need to have some type of permitting ability over in terms of scheduling. The second component that we spoke about last week was events, events on both the boardwalk and, and, and the beach. And we identified the need for a budget conscious approach to restoring many of the events that everybody's accustomed to and that, you know, we all missed out on this past summer. Identifying which ones we can afford to offer and while still, of course, complying with whatever COVID guidelines and or restrictions are in place at the time. Whether it's an arts and crafts festival, whether it's summer concerts, whether it's summer activities and, and private events that we issue permits for. A lot of those events require a fair amount of city personnel. We just want to make sure that we're taking a good hard look at, at costs and making sure that these are events that are cost effective for the taxpayers here. Thankfully, last summer taught us quite a bit and we're more informed when it comes to large gatherings and, and permissible activities and, and how we can make them safety compliant. So we're confident that we can move forward with, you know, multi-tiered plans for how we would handle an arts and crafts festival, so to speak, or how we would handle a biathlon or a one-mile swim or, or a race on the boardwalk. We've taken a lot of steps, we've spoken with a lot of professionals in the industry and we're confident that it may not be all of the events that people are accustomed to, but I think we're gonna make a, be able to make a significant dent in restoring a lot of the activities, you know, look, that make Long Beach as popular as it is. The final component that I'd, I'd like to just talk about is beach passes. More specifically, moving beach passes into 21st century technology. As you all know, an RFP for electronic beach passes went out months ago. We've interviewed and allowed presentations from four bidders. Last week, we met to grade and discuss those proposals and I'm happy to report that we're very close to awarding what we feel is the most responsible bidder. Myself and beach park staff members have some logistical, customizations that we'd like to discuss with them before making that award. And there's also a couple of financial wrinkles with regard to our merchant services contract that Ena and the controllers office are looking into. But both should be completed very soon and we're really, really excited about, about getting this one off the board. It's, it's well past its time. The presentations were unique. I mean, from the standpoint of somebody who's not very technically savvy, I can't tell you how impressed I was with the knowledge and, and, and the amount of effort and time that these people went into to kind of get a grasp on the, you know, our landscape and, and, and the problems that we're faced with, with the, I guess, the prehistoric beach pass operation that, that we kind of run. So I think it's going to be obviously a work in progress for the upcoming summer. We plan to offer both a electronic and physical pass just to get things rolling. But I think we're in good hands. There's, there's some very talented people that, that presented proposals and, and we're confident that we're, we're gonna have the right one. You know, on top of that, Donna's kind of tasked me with having everything ready to go for the upcoming summer by the end of February. So whether it's an umbrella line, a fishing permit, an electronic beach pass, or events that we hope to hold. We want it, we want it known to the public as, as soon as possible and with as much time in between as possible. So there's no surprises and, and everybody's okay with where we're going from there. Happy to answer any questions if anybody has them.
Just wanted, Joe, the, the, the electronic passes would be both the dailies and the seasonals, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else? Good, Karen.
Joe, I just want to say thank you to you and your team.
Joe, I just want to say thank you to you and your team. This has got to be a ton of work behind the scenes. Like, like really huge undertaking and, you know, really rooting for your team. And, and just want to thank you and know that every day, you know, the residents appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. So thank you.
God, thank you very much. We're excited about it, I can say. It's, yeah, it should be, it should be cool.
It is. I know it's gonna be a lot of work, so.
Yeah, yep. We'll, we'll get it.
Okay, anyone else got any questions for Joe or the chief?
No, just thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we go on.
Keep the beach, get, get Donna.
Before we go on, I want to let everybody know that if they had noticed Scott Mendel is not on tonight. His father-in-law passed away. And so he says he'll be sitting in Shiva. I guess that's how you pronounce it.
Shiva.
Shiva. So that's why he's not here tonight.
Okay. Yeah, so. All right, guys, if you can keep the beach from washing away this winter, we'll appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll try. We'll be out there.
Yeah, we got that.
Okay. All right. Thanks, guys.
Take care.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, how about, Donna, you want to talk about sanitation?
Well, yeah, that's actually John and myself. You want to start, John, and I'll finish, or you want me to start?
Sure, no, I'm happy to, I'm happy to start. So as the council is well aware, changes during the global market and changes to our IMA with the vendor that town of Hampstead uses for recycling necessitate that the city switch over to dual stream recycling. So we've been doing single stream recycling where you throw everything and anything into the bucket. And what we need to be doing now is separating our cardboard and paper from the commingled, so the plastic glass metal. We started that transition in January, so the first week of January, I believe that Monday was January 4th. We've been at it for two weeks now. And what we used to implement this so that it would be really as smooth a transition as possible for the residents was a plan that the city has been discussing for well over a year, where the city was divided into different zones. And, you know, each zone would receive a pickup on their respective day in that they would be able to pick up both reset, you know, both of the materials, provided they were separate, you know, for that. So the only thing that would be changing from a residential standpoint was you had to separate and that your day might change. But that whole recycling came, you know, was picked up on the same day. And, you know, I think the goal of, of that plan was so that you wouldn't have to space out when, when the two materials were picked up and that people wouldn't need to retain one of the materials for, you know, for two weeks. What we are finding in the early returns of the two weeks that we have so far is we're gonna need to change, quite frankly, is this is overworking our staff. We're needing to send two crews around for the recycling because we don't have bifurcated trucks. So we're sending one group around to pick up the, the cardboard and paper. We're sending another team around to pick up the commingled. We're also asking them on, you know, Wednesdays to be doing the bulk pickups. And then in addition to this time of year with Christmas trees, it is working them to the bone. Number one, and number two, it's, it's, they're not able to do the job that our residents are accustomed to them doing. And it's leaving our city less clean as a result. So, you know, we're still working out some of the particulars of how we are going to be tweaking things. But residents and councils should expect, you know, to be hearing more, you know, over the next 24 or 48 hours or so about what those tweaks are gonna be. And we're gonna have to adjust accordingly. You know, to make sure that we're being, have reasonable expectations of our workforce, put them on a path to, to where they can succeed. Because these guys know what they've been doing, but are dealing with something of an impossible task right now. And that we have, you know, the clean and beautiful city that we're accustomed to. Anything to add on that, Donna, or any questions from the council?
No, I, I spent some time on the streets with sanitation last Friday. And I heard the sanitation workers, their frustration is that they take pride in their work. The biggest frustration they had was that the city is not clean as it typically is how it was done in the past. And if we're having issues in the winter, can you imagine what it would look like in the summer? And so I spent the time with them. We, we had four trucks out in one area, so really it was eight. Because you had to have one for glass, one for cardboard, one for trash and one for Christmas trees. And so we're trying to be cost effective. We did try it because that's a plan that's been on the table. But being cost effective for the city, keeping a clean city, we do have to make some tweaks to it. And we identified that now we didn't want to go way down and try to identify tweaks. And we are looking at, John, I don't know when it'll come, but in the next couple of months, we are looking at offering a second pail or a second, something that people can put their cardboard in and then one they already have for recycling, recycling bins that they can put the, the bottles in.
Yeah, we're, we're waiting to hear back from the vendor on turnaround time. But yeah, we'd be looking to, you know, so the city can order a ton and get things at economy of scale. So it's looking somewhere on the order of, you know, we would be able to get them for $10 a pail, where if you go to Ace or Home Depot, you know, you're looking at 20, 30 bucks. And that's so we would then probably supply them to our residents, you know, at cost, where we'd be asking, you know, residents to pay the $10 that we pay for it. Because, you know, we ran the numbers of if we ordered 8,000 pails, that's $75,000. You know, so that's just not an expense that the city can bear. So we think a good compromise on that is, you know, if we're ordering a certain amount, we can get them at economy of scales and $10 is a better deal than, you know, any of us could find just walking into our local stores. So we would, we'd cut out the middlemen and just be able to provide them for residents at cost.
Well, city people used to pay for the bins before anyway, because I remember I had to go to City Hall and, and buy a couple of bins.
Right, I believe the city did.
They were five or 10 bucks or whatever they were each.
The, the original, the transition to single stream recycling, the city paid for it at that point in time. But every time prior, it was always, you know, some cost to the, to residents.
That's all, that's all we have on that. And then the last topic we have is COVID.
Bring it home with more happy times. So just, so our seven day breakdown, so for the week ending Tuesday, the 12th is the most recent data that we have in terms of COVID. There were 223 new positive cases in the city, which works out to 31.86 a day. That's held still extremely high, as high as any point we were at in the spring, but it's held pretty flat for the last two, three weeks. Different way to look at it as we're at with these precise numbers over the seven day period, we're at 0.95 per thousand. So just under one person per thousand testing positive a day over a seven day average. And then the other note, the other metric that we know that the state is looking at is percent of available ICU beds. And over a seven day period for Long Island, we're at 21%. So that has held pretty flat as well. So we're not doing great, but we don't see any tremendous movement in terms of the government, you know, expecting shifts from the governor's office in terms of needing to restrict any businesses or, or schools or anything along those lines. Obviously, a lot of the news of late has been the vaccine. While it's given everybody a good deal of hope, it has also been a source of frustration for a lot of people. On Monday, the governor announced in order to come into line with the larger federal guidelines, he expanded the eligibility list. So we're, we're technically in phase one B. It was originally frontline healthcare workers and EMTs. They expanded it really to include 65 and older from age-wise, first responders, grocery store workers, transit workers, public safety workers and teachers. And they're also looking at individuals with autoimmune issues. So we're now at a stage where there's approximately potentially 7 million people in New York State alone that are eligible for the vaccine. And New York State is getting 300,000 doses of the vaccine a month. If you run the math on that, that looks like six months in order to get those 7 million people vaccinated. So we're looking at a little bit of a, a logjam on a distribution level. I can give the number that people can call if you fall into one of those brackets, 65 or older, first responder, transit worker, grocery, teacher, public safety, you can call 1-833-833, sorry, 697-4829. Again, that's 1-833-697-4829 is the New York State hotline to, to see where you can go to make an appointment. But those appointments are, you know, the people, what we're hearing from folks is you're looking at March at the earliest for when they're coming down now. And it is also exceedingly difficult to get through on the phone line. So this is a really frustrating experience. I know there's a ton of people out there that are really eager to get the shot and are still scared. And, you know, I'm speaking with people every day who I haven't left my house. I'm 85 years old. I haven't left my house since March. You know, I know I'm in this category. We're obviously lending a sympathetic ear, but this is, this is the reality. Not just, you know, in Long Beach and Long Island, but across the country right now where the supply of the vaccine just does not match what the demand is. And until the spigot opens up a little bit more on the pipeline, that's gonna be where we're stuck. So we ask you to keep, if you're interested and you want the vaccine, which we obviously encourage everybody to take, following, you know, what CDC's recommendations are, be persistent, keep trying. They did open up as of today, mobile testing or mobile vaccination site at Jones Beach alongside of where they have the testing site. So there is a local place to go to to get it, but it's going to take some time before everybody can really get it. You know, it's gonna take a larger infusion of the vaccine supplied to local states in order to, you know, start improving the wait time.
So just to be clear, can anybody, if, if they can get through, i- is it just 65 and over now that can make an appointment? Or they'll let anyone make an appointment?
It is 65 and over. It's southern, they did phase one A, which is really online healthcare workers. We're now in one B. And on Monday, they expanded who's included in one B.
So it's 65 and over, so if.
Right, so on prior to Monday, it was one B was, you know, your public safety people, so your police, your fire department, your transportation. Then they expanded it to, from the general public standpoint, to include 65 and older. And they're working on defining what people with underlying conditions or comorbidities they will include in it. Because it's a wide range of, you know, potential ailments or, or physical problems. And they're saying that could be when you, when you include those individuals, that's what expands the number out to potentially 7 million. But it is, it's first responders, it's teachers, grocery workers, transit workers and public safety and other deemed government essential workers are included in the one B for now. But it is restricted to just those that are in that one B category.
All right. So moral of the story is we gotta keep, keep wearing masks, social distancing and, and trying to beat this thing back.
Washing your hands.
And washing your hands. So, all right, anybody got any questions for John on that? All right, it's, it's almost 8:30. Liz is missing Dancing With The Stars or The Voice or whatever's on tonight. Maybe this is a good point to, to wrap up unless someone's got something else important.
I just want to say to, to everyone that I appreciate that this team and the efforts that we're all making to fix the broken shattered mess that is dumped in our lap. But we're going to, we're working on fixing it so whoever comes next, they don't have this mess. And I just want to know that although, you know, we hear different stuff in the background that we all suck, we don't. So.
Well, that's the nice way of putting it.
We don't suck.
Well, if, yeah, well, if you read social, well, social media is a whole, taken on a life of its own. So, all right, well, yeah, we'll keep, we'll keep plugging away and chipping away at everything and putting Band-Aids on, on everything and fixing it as we go.
No more kick in the can.
So John, we're, City Hall's closed on Monday, correct?
Uh, yes, for Martin Luther King Day.
Okay. Nellie, are you getting a lot of responses to the MLK Junior art?
I believe so. That's, that's throwing, that's going through events. And I did not check in with her on that front, because we've had a couple of things going on the last couple of days. But last, I, last I heard from her, she was, she was pleasantly pleased with the response thus far. We've been partnering with the schools and some others, you know, so I, I, I think we're gonna, we're gonna get a good.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that's just worth mentioning if anybody's watching, maybe that doesn't know. Since with the COVID restrictions, normally we have the parade each year.
Right.
And this year, we can't, we're not, we're not allowed to do that. So this, there's this art, and I'll, John, if you want to just, Liz or somebody want to touch on that quick, just what it is.
So it's, what we're doing is we're, it's for elementary, middle and high school. For the elementary and the middle school kids, it's a poster competition to reflect on what MLK Junior meant to them and what a reflection on the day is. Especially, you know, there's a theme and I'm not gonna be able to nail exactly what it is right now. But it's being able to do great things during difficult times, you know, so it's mirroring where we're at with the pandemic now. So elementary school kids, it's poster contest. Middle school kids can choose between the poster contest or an essay contest with the same theme. And then for high school students, it's the essay contest. So I think the submission is actually this, the deadline is this Friday. I'm sorry, I don't have the information right in front of me, but I believe the submission deadline is this Friday. And the winners will be announced on Monday.
And just an interesting nugget of information, the new senator from Georgia, the one that just got elected in the runoff election. He is a preacher at the same church in Georgia that Martin Luther King Jr. preached at.
I think his last name is Warnock.
Yeah, Reverend Warnock. He, he, he preaches at the same church that Martin Luther King Jr. preached at. So that's kind of interesting nugget of history. It's coming up for Monday. All right, anyone else got anything? I think Rich's plant grew another two inches while we were on the phone. What's the plant's name again?
What's Audrey?
Audrey, yeah. All right, well, all right, guys, thanks. And I guess we got a city council meeting on Tuesday, so we will, we will chat again on Tuesday.
Good night.
All right, everyone.